We expect to go into exec session for a variety of reasons.
I'll only move that we enter into executive session in to discuss regard discussion regarding proposed pending or currently litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Actually done.
I know how to read. Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Kelly Evans? Sean Eversley-Brandall?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
All right, everyone, we'll see you in exec session. We will be back in a bit. We got a long exec session. We had problems with technology, which was. So we'll, I can go ahead and get started. We're gonna just need to modify the agenda slightly.
Yes, there is a personnel report addendum to be added, which was discussed. Sure, I can also when the more detail we get to the consent agenda, just to make sure it goes.
Alright, so we'll, we'll make it clear when we get to consent.
Right now, looking at public comment period, at least we have one person.
Yeah, do you have your own proposal? Jessa Daria?
Yeah, hi.
Hey, baby.
Hi. Um, it won't get cozy, and I promise I'll keep it to three minutes. Um, first, I want to say, um, I'm a mom of two kids in Northeast, senior practitioner, and I am so grateful for you keeping the schools open last year. You really took a stand on that, and I could cry just like how much it means to my family, and I know there are a lot of other families that feel the same way, so, um, I, I'm just here to ask you to take a stand for kids again. Um, I feel like it's a time right now when I think we need to consider kids' health as more than just the absence of COVID. And, uh, so here I, here's what I have to say. The Surgeon General told us we're in the middle of a mental health crisis among our youth. Suicide attempts are up in young girls by fifty-one percent. Growing number of kids of color are dying by suicide, twice the number of white kids in some reports. Eating disorders have increased by one hundred and twenty percent. This is in addition to the learning losses that kids are experiencing in school. Kids who can't be heard, or they can't hear, who can't follow, who can't follow what's happening, seem disengaged from learning in general, like my daughter does. Then add in all the kids with IEPs and speech issues, and the English is a new language kids. Many teachers say they're dealing with more behavior issues than ever before, and it's really no surprise. Um, kids are bearing a heavy load. I don't think that's any shock to anyone in this room. Many people can finally agree now that cloth masks don't prevent transmission. And I think the answer to that problem is not to mask harder, it's to realize that student masking has no scientifically established benefit in real-world use. Masks hold less, less purpose now than they did pre-vaccine, and the potential harms for long-term masking are poorly understood. When I talk about getting masks up in schools, some people express concern for equity. Argument is that COVID may disproportionately impact communities of color, so we need to continue our efforts in order to protect them. There's another issue of equity, which can't be addressed with a vaccine, what many have called the laptop class. Well, they did pretty well during COVID, even now ordering door action, working from home, but the working class had to keep showing up, do their jobs, and we've got to recognize the extroverted place on those families, on those children, and all the concerns I just outlined fall even harder on them. The record, I'm in the so-called third camp of people on this issue of COVID, pro-vaccine and anti-mask. Vaccines are game changers for vulnerable people, dramatically lowering the risk of hospitalization and severe illness. And the great thing is we don't have to wait for everyone to get vaccinated, some may choose not to. But their choice doesn't impact my ability to benefit from my vaccine and my children to benefit from theirs, and I think we can all, we're all beginning to appreciate with Omicron that even if we were to vaccinate everyone, we'd still see lots of mostly mild infections in vaccinated people. Bottom line is that our children are least at risk from COVID, and yet they've borne the heaviest burden these past two years. Now in 2022, with our knowledge, our great vaccines, with Omicron showing us that the community spread is real and isn't going away, our policy should reflect a measured and respectful approach. Dr. himself told us that everyone will be exposed, and we all have a day with COVID, especially children who will be living with this virus circulating for their entire lives. But what is our endgame? Are we trying to keep them, are we trying to keep them from getting COVID forever, or until every kid's vaccinated, or just indefinitely? Do these COVID policies really truly represent a kind of meaningful being to our community? What is that gain? And in the meantime, what are our children losing? Finally, I just want to know what that off-ramp is. What is the plan for our kids? Individual school districts do have some amount of choice, as we've seen from other states, and they may have more, what their current mask mandate in New York for schools expressed on February twenty-first. Many people seem to be sort of waiting around to see if this problem fixes itself, but I'm here to tell you, I don't think it will. I think we might have to get loud, we might have to speak up, maybe even get a little angry. I'm prepared to take a stand for kids. I hope that you'll find me. If you're listening.
Any other comments in the room or online? Chris, there's nobody. Nope, okay. Anyone else in the room? I'm seeing, well, I'm seeing staff. We hear from you all the time, so that's. Uh, board responses? But we'll do board responses.
Is it board responses? I, I'll, I have something to say. It's Erin here from home, Erin Croyle. Jessa, I'm angry with you. Um, this has been really hard, and, you know, I, I know what you mean. Kids are suffering. And I think that, you know, unfortunately, the people suffering the most are the people who are immunocompromised, and masks stink. I'm sick of wearing a mask. I absolutely am. But if that means that it's saving a life or keeping children safe, I'll wear one for the rest of my life. You know, I'm very open of the fact that I have a child who's immunocompromised. He is eleven. He has had three shots of the vaccine, and all of his specialists, all six of them, that deal with his immune system issues, all want him to be masked, and all say it's safe for him to go to school if people around him are masked. Cloth masks might not be as effective, but we, that's why we have N95 masks. I get that we're sick of it, but we're protecting people who cannot protect themselves. When we talk about vulnerable populations, one of the most vulnerable populations right now are people with disabilities. And, you know, my son is not the only kid out there who has immune system issues. And when we talk about kids wearing masks, there are kids who sensory-wise cannot keep a mask on, and so they rely on their peers to be able to keep the mask on to keep them safe. You know, if the mask mandate goes away, then some of these kids might have to start going to school at home again, um, and that is devastating to everyone's mental health. I know that I couldn't do it again. I would probably end up like buried in my bed. That's how hard it was. So I get it, but I also see how, um, amazing and resilient our kids are. And while we have a lot of adults complaining about masks, I have yet to see a kid think that it's a really big deal. Like, a lot of them have been integrated into doing this, and it's just not a big deal for them. It's the parents who find it to be a big deal. I hope, I hope, hope, hope that we can say goodbye to this soon, but I, 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 I think that masks are a really great step for us to have some normalcy. Masks allow us to attend events. Masks allow us to go to school. Masks allow us to go to sports. Um, we take that layer of protection away, and we're putting kids at danger, and we're putting a, a population of people that has always been marginalized in even more danger. And they, you know, just because someone is immunocompromised doesn't mean that they should have to stay home because people are sick of wearing a mask. I think it's really important to think of, you know, how much protection these masks provide. Thank you.
Other responses?
I think I would like to, to also, you know, thank you, Erin. I think that's a pretty good point. I'd also like to observe, um, you know, I, for most of my life, I have lived, um, in Ithaca with myself and my two parents and my cats, and, you know, none of us are really immunocompromised. Um, so we don't have to worry as much, but this summer, uh, my grandparents moved in, and they, you know, they are, are, are old, um, and if they get, um, COVID, that, that, that wouldn't be good. Um, you know, they've, they've gotten their vaccines, they've gotten other boosters and everything. But we're, you know, it's, it's still, you know, there's, there is still a chance. So what our kind of policy in the family is, is, you know, if, if I get COVID, I'm not gonna get horrendously sick, you know? I'm gonna be out of action for a week or two. Yeah, and that's gonna suck, but there's really a very low chance that I'm going to, to die. And the same is true for my parents, but for my grandparents who live with me, um, that same is not true. So while my direct risk may be very low, it, it really isn't, because the people that I live with, the people that I care about, that are really within my household, it's not true for all of them. It's, it's kind of, you know, you're only as fast as the slowest, you know, ship in the convoy or whatever. Um, you're only as healthy as the least healthy person in your household. So, you know, for me, I'm very healthy, but for my household, I'm, I'm really, I'm kind of at risk. And that means that I have to kind of be acting as though I am really at risk, because people that I live with are at risk. So I'm not, I, I, I respect what you're saying, what you're saying, and I do, I do really agree with you, because, you know, we go to LACS, we have kids at this building who have not been really in real school since fourth grade, and you can see it plain as dead, they've missed out on a lot of kind of social, emotional learning. They, they, they don't have as much connections with each other, and, you know, people, even people who are, who are more mature, more developed, are still having trouble. But if, I mean, that is stuff which is really bad to be missing out on, but can be made up. Like, they may be, they may have slowed down in the, no, they may have slowed down their development, but I, I do think that there is some level that they can still kind of develop that, and if my grandparents die, they're not going back. So I would say that we should be keeping masks in school just to keep everybody who has their grandparents at home, who has an immunocompromised parent.
But what's happened?
There's, there's no doubt that this thing is really annoying. Um, at this point, I think most of us have gotten used to it. I, at this point, I don't mind wearing my mask much. Of course, I would prefer not to. Um, but it's kind of become the norm, right? For good or, for good or bad. Obviously, I wish I, I, I wish I knew what the bottom half of many of my classmates faces look like. Um, and there, there's, there's no doubt that, um, you know, not being able to fully socialize with people in school has, has hurt a lot of people. Um, I think that a lot of these concerns that were mentioned, um, you know, the youth mental health crisis, suicides, eating disorders, um, these are really, really endemic issues. They are, they are huge. Um, we actually, um, in the Tattler, um, edition that's coming up tomorrow, we have an editorial about, um, the rise in prevalence of eating disorders, especially among teenagers. It, these are huge issues, and yet, um, I, I don't think masks are the reasons for them. I think that there are plenty other, much bigger systemic, um, reasons and issues that are really the, the primary, um, causes of, um, these, um, emotional pandemics, um, that will not be soft at all by the removal of masks. Not only that, but as, you know, the vaccines slowly start to lose their effectiveness, and now in the winter, when transition ma, when transition ri, when trans, transmission rates are elevated, um, if we do de-mask at schools, transmission rates will skyrocket, and that will lead to tons of kids having to miss school, because we can't just come to school sick anymore like we used to before COVID. We can't put people at risk like that, and students will miss school. Students will lose out on more learning. I remember as, as a freshman, even in pre-COVID times, I was forced to miss a total of nine days of school in my first quarter of high school due to religious absences. All of the Jewish holidays spelled midweek. It was really unlucky, and I never made that up. Um, my grades tanked. It was, it was really bad, and I would really, really hate to see that happen to hundreds of students, um, in a way that's preventable. Um, that doesn't have to happen. We can definitely reevaluate come summer, when things are safer, hopefully. You know, there's no way to know what the next variant will be, but hopefully COVID rates will be lower. Um, but for now, I think it's far too big a risk, um, to say, okay, let's throw caution to the wind. Let's hope everything turns out okay. Let's hope our teachers can stay healthy and keep our school running. Let's hope our kids can keep coming to school, because if students start getting more COVID, if teachers and staff get more COVID, we might not be able to keep the schools open. So many schools around us have had to shut down because of staffing shortages, and we know that ITSD is short on staff. Um, if we have a breakout, we might have to go online with it, right? Um, and we really, really don't want that to happen, um, because, you know, all of these populations that we've mentioned already will be disproportionately affected by that, too. So in order to keep students in school, in order to keep people healthy and safe, we must continue to wear masks, um, for the foreseeable future. Um, that's my opinion. Um, yeah.
Sarah, then second. Then more.
Yes. I just wanted to say that, um, the mental health thing is very important. I think it is always important to bring up mental health when dealing with children. I think it is, um, very indicative of the times that we are in, um, these are COVID times, I guess. Um, and it is very important that we wear our masks, um, and that wearing a mask does not affect my mental health personally. Um, I think that myself having an eating disorder, um, wearing a mask does not affect that. Um, what affects me having an eating disorder is because I want to be skinny. And that's that. But like, I just wanted to say that, yeah, wear a mask.
Yeah, I, I would think that. Uh, thanks, Ben, and me also, other people. Yeah, I personally, I have a lot of younger siblings, and my grandparents are also immunocompromised, and a lot of my aunts and uncles are also, like, immunocompromised, and they all go to school, and they're from elementary school to also middle school. None of them that I personally know, there's like a couple, like, yeah, they don't care about masks. What they care about is they have immunocompromised friends. They have immunocompromised, like, my grandparents. They're, and they wanted, they don't want to miss their education. Our schools, if we get more COVID cases, which are preventable by masks, is gonna hurt them more than wearing a mask, which currently, and for them, doesn't affect them. I think it's not the time, I think we are still in COVID times, which means you shouldn't just think of COVID as like a cold. Like, oh, someone gets it, it's okay. It's, it's a severe virus that we don't have under control yet, and we should be still doing everything that we can to make everyone safe.
Are you going?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure you know that the board, we have been, and, uh, all of the board reps are deeply concerned about the mental health issues that we're faced. Um, but in terms of the mask issue, if and when the mask issue, decision about masking is left to individual school districts, we have to be guided by the science, which has been the mantra through this whole time. The science is not static. It's constantly changing. Today and yesterday, I listened and read multiple medical professionals discuss the mask issue and the efficacy of masks, the, um, the recommendation to continue masking, and the consensus that I was hearing was, was very different from what you were asserting. They were uniformly saying masks still are a layer of protection that we need to hold on to. And, and in addition, they were discussing deep concerns about COVID in children and hospitalizations of children for COVID. Low risk doesn't mean no risk, and if there's one thing that we know about this virus, it's that who will get it and how badly they will get it is wildly unpredictable. And so, um, that's why I think it's, it's, it's a wise precaution to continue to wear masks, which I think, you know, as other people have said, um, you know, I've gotten used to it. My three-year-old grandson seems used to it. Um, so, and I recognize that for some students, as you were saying, you know, the mask is a, um, is a, a, a barrier, um, to their learning and their socialization more than it is for other kids. I think what we need to do is to figure out accommodations that address those needs for those particular children.
The other board members have anything they wish to share?
Hey, Rob, this is Chris. I just want to thank the student reps for their perspective. Um, it's extremely valuable and beneficial. Um, unfortunately, we are in these COVID times, and another perspective I just want to put out there, I would never feel comfortable having teachers in the classroom and saying that this is not important to you, or we're not considering you as, as well as the students. So I just wanted to share that.
Well, uh, yeah, we will, uh, this is a fluid situation, and we've talked a lot about sci, I'm not gonna get into the science, certainly talk about science a lot regarding masks and vaccines, et cetera. Um, masks are one thing, mandates are another. So, um, the solution, well, the future here is not, uh, not gonna be decided through science. Once again, politics will come in play. Um, you're seeing it already, and I think we have to consider how do we, uh, how do we move forward when the mandate is lifted? Because it will be lifted, and it's not going to be after Election Day in November. It will be lifted before then because of the political situation and reelection of certain officials. So I think we need to figure out how do we, how do we live, how do we as a district move forward with, um, with some, some students and some folks with a mask and others who choose not to? Um, and that, what does the future look like? And I think it's gonna be with folks that are very comfortable with a mask, and that'll be great, and others, and really determined that they need that mask and they feel much better that way, and we're gonna have other folks that, um, there's not a mask mandate. The rate of infection is very low, and we're gonna have, we're gonna have to learn how to live with this, and, uh, and I think that's, we're gonna have to deal with, because, um, that's, you know, it's not about science anymore. Um, we've been dealing with this for over two years, going into three years, and it's, uh, the mandates will, and, and so we just need to talk, prepare, how are we gonna manage this when the mandates go away? Because they won't go away. I'm not gonna say when, because I'm not a politician. So, um, so we're just, there's, um, there are talks today, there was meetings with the governor today with, I saw coming through multiple different folks going, meeting with the governor today, throughout education in New York State, and they're all providing input, the PTAs, the School Board Association, the superintendents, et cetera, all coming together to talk about this. And so this is fluid, and, um, and we will talk and we'll deal with it as we do in Ithaca, coming up with the best solution for, for the most. But anyway, so we'll, uh, I don't think anybody else needs to talk, so student reps, we already talked some, but you can talk about other things, too, not about these things. Elise, yes.
Great. We had our first, whole in-person ASM since COVID. We just thank you again for approval. Uh, when we, 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 it was our Black Lives. Okay. It was our, our, it was our Black Lives Matter, called ASM. We had a safe space in the library for people that also didn't feel fully comfortable, and that both went successfully, and we want to thank you again for our whole school, thank you for giving us the approval to have them again, and we are bringing back funding.
Um, well, at our school, um, sorry, at our school, we, um, fundraised to, in order to go on our trips, um, because we have this thing called Trips Week, and it's where all family groups get together, and, well, the whole school gets together, and we decide on trips, what we are taking, and, um, we, um, we choose, and we choose through trips we want to go on, and, um, we take those trips, but it takes a lot of fundraising and a lot of money and a lot of resources to go on those trips. So we are fundraising, and fundraising is that, because we haven't been able to, um, go on trips because of COVID or whatnot. So, yeah, we are fundraising, and, um, sorry, it's not a Citrus. Um, it's a Spanish trip, um, so that's very fun. So please, please buy. As well as, um, trips, um, our teachers are deciding on whether or not our trips are gonna be, um, like, local, or if, whether or not we're gonna be able to, like, COVID because of COVID, and that we don't want to be the reason for this, right? At ours.
Some other topics that we've been thinking about. We, let's see, we still have got, um, some issues with transportation. Um, so notably, the buses from the high school, um, they recently changed their time that they were departing at from eight fifty-four, fifty-six-ish to, to eight fifty, um, which was not communicating to students. We also have had some difficulty with getting enough buses. For example, you know, when the, the most recent appearance, that yesterday, we didn't have, um, enough buses to take all the students from LACS to the high school. Um, so that was, that, that happened. There was not, um, so that was, we didn't have enough buses. So the shuttle buses between the high school and LACS, and LACS and high school haven't been working very well.
And there wasn't, from the bus driver's perspective, there wasn't communication on how many buses were supposed to be there. There's a different amount of information between the bus drivers of like, there's two more buses coming, there's no more buses coming. So a lot of students just wound up, like, either missing, like, missing the bus, and there was another transfer bus that had to be called in, that came in about like ten or fifteen minutes afterwards, because they had to call it in, and that left about maybe like twenty, thirty kids that just couldn't get down to the high school because of the, like, lack of communication between the bus drivers. And this has also just been an overall problem of there not being enough shuttles between LACS and IHS throughout this entire COVID school year so far. And, I mean, yeah, but especially this year. Students are still showing up late, first period teachers are still getting students that like chappel into their classes because we're a bus attendant.
We also, in, in, in better news, um, the LACS musical, which is Little Shop of Horrors, is gonna be opening this weekend. Um, it's Friday at seven, Saturday at seven, Sunday at two. Uh, and this year, due to kind of spacing distances and other concerns, uh, we decided to hold it in the gym instead of in the Black Box Theater. So there's been an all kind of, uh, an all original set built in the gym, um, and there's gonna be some very kind of new and unique techniques, as well as a live pit band, um, and they're also on, I can't remember if it's Friday or Saturday that I didn't talk about.
Friday.
Friday. On Friday night after the show, they're going to the students of, who are acting, this is gonna be holding a little kind of talkback session, because Little Shop of Horrors is a very kind of like fun hack musical about plants eating people. It also includes, um, kind of. It also includes kind of somewhat secondary to the plot. But, you know, adjacent to the plot, there are a lot of issues with kind of domestic violence and abuse and gentrification, economic inequality in that. So the students, which are, you know, sixth through twelfth graders, are going to be holding a session talking about, you know, what they learned about that. The the wonderful Dr. Nia Nun came in and talked to the students and had a conversation, as well as Lynn from the Advocacy Center about all of these issues. So they're gonna they're gonna talk with the audience about what they learned and and the themes and, you know, stuff like that. So that's really cool, and comes in the musical.
And we're also kind of during right now, the winter season, there's been a lot more appreciation for LACS fashion. And we've actually had a lot of social media accounts in our cuisine. It's being talked about of kind of the creativity of LACS. And it's been a really positive experience for students to kind of show themselves and express themselves more. And it's been really a great process. Yeah, and and also thank you again for the snow days. We really appreciate it. A four-day weekend was incredible. Thank you again. I understand the decision-making process and all of that. Thank you again. And I think that's, is that it?
Yeah, we've just pretty much over the past few weeks at LACS, we've been cruising along. It's been it's been good. We had we we finished up our our second semester or our first semester, second cycle. Yeah, well, we we did eval, so that's that's done. And now students are going into their third cycle projects and second semester classes. And we've got teacher evals. That's the big thing.
You all did amazing.
Glad we have no doubt. The Ithaca High, go ahead.
Yeah, so unfortunately, if you can see, Aton is not with us today. But last time we met, IHS students were in the midst of a Modified Regions Week that consisted of half-days after New York State's cancellation of the state of the New York State Regents. We all very enjoyed those half-days that kind of let us take a little bit of a break between the first and second semester. Second semester is off to a great start with Black Lives Matter Schools Week. Time of Black History is celebrated, and students are invited to engage in necessary conversations or surrounding race and social justice. Black authored literature and stories have been shared on the morning announcement. Well, and they've been widely appreciated by students continually. Ithaca Varsity Boys Basketball and CHEER had their senior nights last Wednesday. And the stands were alive with students, including me. Parents and community members who are all very excited to celebrate the scholar athletes.
The latest edition of the newsletter will be out tomorrow featuring editorials on ICSD staff and national eating disorder awareness. Be sure to pick up a coffee at the high school or at various locations around town. Students are currently auditioning and preparing their acts for the annual IHS cabaret, which will be held on Friday, March fourth. And as always, will be hosted by the IHS orchestras and the high school cafeteria. The junior class is hosted by the exciting trivia night fundraiser this Friday. It is also good to see COVID testing up and running on a regular basis every Monday, which students are taking a fall again each year. The board reps have been consistently meeting with Mr. Trumbull bi-weekly to bring up student and teacher concerns throughout IHM. One topic that is on students' minds is scheduling. Due to state regulations, our current schedule needs to be modified so that there is an increase in class time. Furthermore, the building administration is determined to introduce a universal lunch to the IHS schedule next year. A controversial yet feasible solution proposed by the admin is a seven-period schedule with a universal lunch. This would allow for all students to have a lunch period regardless of the number of classes they take, but would shorten the maximum number of classes taken from eight to seven and decrease the opportunities to take electives like band and tech classes. As always, change brings many concerns, and the schedule is still being updated and changed as we speak.
Another concern that's been brought to our attention at the high school, especially over the last week, is the continued presence of the large shipping or trucking containers that have been in the IHS parking lot for quite some time. They take up a significant amount of parking space, which while bothersome can also now be somewhat dangerous, especially if the entire parking lot is covered in snow. This creates a situation where some students are late to class because they're searching for parking and there are there's a shortage of parking spots, which leads to students and staff parking dangerously close to each other in unsafe conditions, which makes the parking lot even more of a zoo before and after school. Many, many students have been asking me to ask you why the containers are there and also when they might be removed.
As many of you know, New Jersey has lifted the mask mandate for schools. And despite this, many teachers, students, and parents are still concerned about the continued health concerns for good reason. And many are concerned that New Jersey is rushing the end of its mask mandate. New York seems to be following suit, but their mask mandate for schools expires the 21st. A lot of students I've talked to are concerned that ICSD will end its mask policy if the state ends it also. My question for the board is if the New York mask mandate for schools expires, will ICSD implement its own mask mandate, or will it follow suit for the state?
Thanks, Ithaca. Our responses, they do have work to get to, but we've got a good discussion so far. But everyone's right, and no one's talking. Sean does like periods of silence for reflection. And we'll talk about tonight is going to be all about facilities, and we're going to talk about the those shipping containers that are full of furniture, basically. That's not building materials, it's full of furniture. But we'll talk about that in a little bit. Because we like answers that we can come up with in a fairly easy way. And Sean, yes.
So before I offer any commentary, any other board, I wonder if we can maybe go out of turn of things that you are going to answer. So then I know what I may or may not speak to as well, if that works okay by you, Dr. Brown.
Sure, I can speak to masks. How about that? Thank you for the conversations and suggestions and recommendations. I was one of the folks who was on the call with the governor today as well. And as I was on the call, I was actually sending some of my friends a meme of a friend of mine. Well, I wouldn't call him a friend now. But we played basketball together in high school. And because he was same size as I, but could jump much higher. That's why he played eighteen years in NBA. And his career was his career, although he is a Hall of Famer, his career was marked by a word called practice. He was at a session where I'm saying, we talking about practice? Y'all already know what I'm talking about now. His name is Allen Iverson, a very controversial figure from the state of Virginia. And his illustrious career was marked by a conversation about practice, although important. It was much more to what he was doing in his on his team and for the organization in addition to practice. So I was sitting there to my friends today because this conversation about masks is dominating everything in our schools, and we aren't spending much time talking about teaching and learning. Let me tell folks what we're thinking and what I'd see happening. Let's be absolutely clear. We will do what we've always done, and that is follow the guidance from our local health department. At this point, there has been no decisions around masking. And before we get into our conversation about, I mean, masks, we need to hear from our local health department. Because the person is making the decision, or not the health professionals leading these kind of conversations for our community. So we will be leaning on our local health department to make recommendations. And from my understanding, local health departments all over the state may and have been making different decisions based on executive orders and that mandate coming from our local health department. So instead of us pointing fingers or getting angry with one another and being polarized around, I mean, masks, let's talk about other things, budget, teaching and learning, Black Lives Matter at school. And when the time comes to make decisions about something, and I'll say it again, I've said this for the last two years, there are no good decisions here. I will be making the decision, we will be making the decision to keep masks on, which we know impacts teaching and learning and one social, emotional health. Or not, which we know will impact teaching and learning or one social, emotional health. So when not making a good decision, there's going to be a decision that will be made. And I'm looking forward to our community engaging in what happens next. How do we move forward? How do we engage? What do we do? No one knows what decision will be made. We're waiting on our local health department to make a decision first, and then we will have the conversation. But we may have four or five weeks to talk about something other than, I mean, masks, which are teaching and learning, budget, and so forth. I'm hoping I'm laying out the process we will go through. And also knowing that at some point, we will probably be making a decision. And that decision will be guided by recommendation, science, and the conversation. And we provide a clear for you what you're thinking. But please know, I'm also hearing from a lot of other folks who have very, very, very different perspectives and wishes. And we got to think, what happens when young persons adults come into our spaces, which is happening in schools all the country, and just refuse to wear them? How will we how will we respond? Because that's happening now too. Whether they're doing it purposely or they're having a tough time keeping the mask on. How do we take, how do we address that? I can see that coming, not just this year, but maybe next year as well. There's some thoughts on it. But this is not a binary decision, and I rarely make hypothetical guesses about what's going to happen there.
So that's partly I wanted to have that conversation. I'm also very much aware, as folks may know, that this is a highly litigious issue. And so there may be a New York State Supreme Court decision that bans a mandate, even at the local school district, about masks. So it's going to be something that we're hearing. The courts have already flip-flopped in three times in two weeks. I imagine that's going to continue to happen. So sometimes a decision may be within our realm, and then we'll engage in that. And it may be something that is not within our realm, that we are unable to. Just mean we don't still have the conversation. But I'm I'm looking what's going forward. And that same thing holds true for private organizations and public organizations, which have different responsibilities, right? That they've already said that you don't have to wear a mask in some businesses coming up in the next two weeks, right? So this is going to be one of those things that we're talking about. Transportation, I want to address real quick. It is, are we speaking about transportation this evening?
We'll bring that back to the next meeting.
So we'll bring it back to the next meeting. All that I'll say is, as someone who reads, and I like many folks in the room who read the news headlines and news stories from across the nation for about forty-five minutes to an hour each day, this is a significant issue all across the country. So much so that there are school districts who are calling in the National Guard to provide additional bus drivers for transportation. That does not absolve us of the issues that we are experiencing here in Ithaca, that part I know. And so I it's going to be an important issue for us to have a conversation about what is possible. One idea that we've done in years prior, maybe something we want to reconsider, though we have not had any conversation. At one point in time, we gave every secondary student in the Ithaca City School District a TCAT bus pass, with that sort of helped minimize some of the folks who rely on ICSD busing. It may or may not have an impact. TCAT may or may not be ready for us, but I know we've gone down that path before. There are other options that we're talking about. Some school districts are finding ways to provide monetary incentives for parents and caregivers to drive their children to school. A bunch of legal hurdles to even consider that idea. But the notion is that, yes, at some point in time, we have to have some conversations about what we can do to alleviate what's happening in our community. But know that we are not alone, and a number of schools have actually had to cancel school for not being able to provide enough transportation for young folks for that thing. So it's on the radar. We're aware, we're working on it. That part I can tell you. Multiple conversations does not absolve or resolve the immediate issue, that part I know. But I don't want folks to think that it's not something that we're not thinking about on a daily basis.
Sean. Lawyer, you're always taking lots of notes on all that. Anything?
Thank you. I agree, there's been a massive busing issue, and it's really quite exciting because a lot of students rely on our busing systems to get to school. And it's kind of, it's been a major equity issue for our building. There are students that don't have the ability to take a TCAT or take the bus without being crowded by two or classes. And there's students that can, that are on the closer bus or that live downtown that get to the bus early because they don't have to take the shuttle bus up, and their buses aren't late. Or they take a TCAT in, which they're on route. Or they get their parents to drive them in, which they have a parent with a car. I think our, I mean, it's not a simple solution. But I think the one that we could make that doesn't involve getting more bus drivers, which would be amazing. But I think it's really just communication among bus drivers. I think that's the thing that needs to happen because with our issue yesterday, if there we were able, if the bus drivers communicated that there wasn't another bus coming, then a bus could have waited for every student to load, not left when they're supposed to leave and held back. I think that's kind of our best solution at this moment, or at least the most temporary quick fix.
So Zara, I greatly appreciate that. I also know that things are oftentimes more complicated than what what may originally appear. And the great thing is that we do have three additional bus drivers on tonight's personnel report. And we're continually trying to find additional folks to do some additional recruitment. So we'll follow up with that as best we possibly can.
Okay, very good. And we'll move on to the consent agenda, and we did have one item to clarify.
On tonight's consent agenda, there is a change in the start date of a science teacher at Boynton Middle School. It's page two. The start date should be February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. So as long as folks know, page two, science teacher at Boynton Middle School, starting on February seventeenth is the new start date. That's an earlier start date than what was originally posted. So we're happy to have folks there.
Nadira is very happy behind us, so thank you, Cleveland. So so that is noted, and that will be, we will vote on that tonight in a second. And there, we discussed everything else, I believe, right? So. Thank you, Maura.
I'll second the consent agenda.
Thank you, Sean and Tricia, if you can call the roll.
Rob Ingsley?
Yes.
Erin Cora? Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Nicole Fahey?
Yes.
Chris Math, I'm sorry. Moira Lynn?
Yes.
Chris Matham?
Yes.
Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
Thank you all. All right, Dr. Brown, we're back to you.
Thank you for the opportunity, potentially. I'll be very grateful. Just wanted to introduce to some folks, reintroduce to others, Ms. Nadira. In the back, I know the students at the last session asked questions about HR, human resources, and our recruitment and retention efforts. Ms. Vasco, she's the assistant director for human resources. And there are a number of initiatives that are underway and things that are going to be started. Just quickly, and then maybe we can come back and have a separate agenda at some point. With Ms. Vasco's recruitment, she is now going to be traveling. She's been traveling all over the state and will be going to Newport, Iona, Sidney Courtland. Every teacher app program, she's going to be representing the ICD at ICSD at those sessions. She's been doing some new educated recruitment fairs here and elsewhere. Ms. Ingsley attended one not long ago. We've had other folks come give folks who have an interest in our school district a taste of what we can do and what we're attempting to do. Leading the fast-tracking efforts on the consent agenda, as of right now, we've been able to identify some of the best candidates of color in New York State. One of them is actually the son of one of my ex-attending friends, Mark Allen. And the whole the whole island is upset that we're stealing. Anyway, we've been able to fast-track. And that's been a protocol and a policy that the board has put in place for years now that we use on occasion to identify the best and most highly qualified folks in our state. And we can then fast-track and give them contracts before other folks get to them and start to recruit. So we're happy about some of those efforts. Thank you, Ms. Sims, for helping us to identify. Some retention efforts, HR on the road. She and Bob have been going out into individual schools, talking to folks, getting feedback on our HR processes and systems, which has eliminated many things and also affirmed other things. So going out to meet with folks, we are revamping in the ways in which we look to recruit and retain substitute teacher. Including just looking at our process, there have been full schedule substitute onboarding sessions in February. So we hear from folks that substitutes are a big issue currently, and will help with our retention efforts like you would all over the country. We're doing some pretty cool things. And we can go into much more detail later at another meeting. But I just want you to know, we have an awesome team that's coming together to do things around this work, including an offboarding process that we will we will also.
Yeah, just want to add that last week at the HR committee meeting, we discussed a lot of these things. We also discuss offboarding or exit interviews. And, you know, what is the, we do offer exit interviews. Not a lot of people take us up on that. So we did some brainstorming around how we might get, you know, greater participation in people giving us information about why they're in, uh, people giving us information about why they're leaving. So we're working on that.
Thank you. And every time you bring something to us, we will do our, do some research. Again, I'm looking at busing, we'll talk about busing the next time we come back together during superintendent superintendent section of the agenda, if I'm allowed to speak.
Dr. Brown, we always like. Not for very long, but you're. And Dr. Brown, we're going to segue right to capital projects, Chris, right? And, um, this is a really start of the year. This is an opportunity to, uh, get an update on, go ahead, Chris. Chris, Amanda?
Yes, so thank you so much for the opportunity for us to be able to give an update on the capital project. So there are many, many layers to this capital project. Um, I'll just, Chris is going to really be, uh, taking the lead on presenting, um, phase one with Cindy Dusset. Chris Globitz is our architect from Tetra Tech, one of our many architects from Tetra Tech. They have been, um, serving a key part of, and the part of the design phase in trying to take all of our wonderful ideas and put them on a paper, vet those again and again and again, and take them through the process of state education for approval. Cindy Dusset is with Campus Construction. Um, she serves as the project manager along with Kim Gray, who I believe is online as well. Um, and those are key functions because they're the construction side of the piece, right? So you have the design piece, construction plays with that, and then, um, the design and architect phase, all sorts of construction. Cindy keeps this on schedule. Cindy makes sure that all the contractors are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and their subs and the subs of the subcontractors are doing what they're doing. So really, um, they have a whole team of folks that are field managers, um, on the ground, making sure that, um, people are showing up to work, doing their work, and that we really have great communication all the way up to the board levels, the community, to the district stakeholders, um, and put together all of our reports. Paul Alexander, and hi, we serve as the district liaisons for the capital project. You're so fortunate to have Paul with the project because this is, I don't know how many capital projects have Paul. This is, this is the biggest one, um, for a hundred and twenty million. But Paul really has just a fabulous, um, ability to be able to sort of alert and identify any maybe issues that we might see, um, when we're dealing with any of the buildings. Uh, some of the historical details around why this works this way, or the problems or issues that we face. And so it's really been fantastic team. So tonight, I get to be sort of a listener and also a question answer, and I get to be a learner as well. So Chris and Cindy are going to be really present.
Thanks, Amanda.
Yeah.
Thanks to the board, Dr. Brown, for having us tonight. We've been really excited to be doing a lot of really exciting work, uh, with Ithaca City School District. I'm going to run through a bunch of work that we've gotten done, um, during the pandemic and that we're planning on doing, and, um, open for questions. So jump in at any time, just try to flag me down. I'll try to pause so that the folks online can, in comments. Uh, so I'll, I'll point out first that we, there is a great capital project website on the Ithaca City School District website. Look for the little crane, right? Um, and there are a lot of photographs and videos that you can see there. Uh, Joe Scaglione, community member, has been taking these videos and lots of photos. If you're curious about how things get built, there's time-lapse stuff in there. There's a lot of great resources there. Ithaca City School District manages over one point one million square feet, over twenty-two buildings or so. Uh, over two hundred and sixty acres. So there's a lot of just facility stuff. And so as a team, what we're trying to do, and our goal is to provide facilities that help with teaching and learning, so you all can do what's so important and why we're all here tonight. Amanda, touch on this a little bit. There's a whole team and a whole process of folks that, that discusses capital project, uh, improvements from administration to different admin, um, uh, directors, athletic directors, food service, all these transportation, all these different pieces that Amanda is the point person on, just reaching out constantly, building leadership. Um, we hear student comments when we're, when we're going through design process, the Sunrise Movement, you know, uh, you know, got involved in, in some of the work at LACS coming up here. One of the key aspects of that is, is a, a monthly meeting where we get together, um, the architects, the construction managers, representatives from the school district, and we talk about capital projects for like three hours every, every month, uh, to update, make decisions, uh, get feedback in from, from all different parts of, of the process. Um, so this is a slide that we've talked about a bunch. This is planning phase where we're thinking about how, you know, when the projects go, um, are going to be, there's the design and approval where, where Tetra Tech, uh, we're architecture engineers, and we design the projects, uh, with, with input from the construction managers, like, you can't build that, you gotta, you know, do it this way. Um, so we work as a team, and then we come into construction where, uh, campus construction management really takes over a little bit more, uh, day-to-day operations of getting, getting work done. I want to talk about this slide just for a minute to give an overview of, of what's in play, what's, what's got done, what we're working on. So this red line indicates, you know, roughly where we are today, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty-two. Um, and we go back to twenty nineteen, where in, in May, the, the voters, uh, approved the one hundred and twenty million dollar capital project, right? And so we started planning different phases. So you can't do that all at once, you do it in chunks, right? So you break it up like a big, like a big paper, right? You don't just write it all at once, you get your outline, you get, you know, your right part of it, you know, you guys know. Um, so what we've, what we've called phase one, uh, we're right near the end of it here, we're almost done, right? So you've seen a lot of construction work, like the video I showed, and a lot of work at Ithaca High School. Um, and, and a lot of the other buildings, I'm going to run through this, what we've done very quickly. There's also, uh, putting a new roof on, on Ithaca High School. It's a couple hundred thousand square feet, a big job. So we're doing that for two summers. So last summer was, was completed successfully, and we're looking forward to this next summer finishing that one. Um, what we're calling phase two is a big package of work that I'll get into in some detail. And we just today got approval from the New York State Education Department.
Hallelujah.
That allows us to then get the building permits and go out to bid and, and take that project to the next step.
Well, not to stop you, but final approval, I mean approval, approval, that's one more step than all the.
It's, it's approval, like.
We'll get the building permits.
Building permits are being processed.
They were submitted in May. It's what this, this phase two project was submitted in May. You can all do the math on how long it needed in the queue. And, uh, it's a long time.
We hear about staffing shortages in the national news, right? And our, our New York State Education Department is suffering from that as well, just not having staff to process, um, projects. And we, we've seen that unfortunately. Um, but we're moving forward with that. Um, you know, going into WIT, there is a project to improve the control systems for the mechanical equipment, heating and cooling. So there have been some issues with things not being controlled well. Um, and so we're replacing that, uh, the control system that has served a long life, and it's ready to be replaced. So that is ongoing right now. Uh, we have done some, some relatively small projects at, at Boynton at the WIT, removing those hard gym partitions, uh, the some and removing those and replacing those with, uh, curtains that are a lot safer. Uh, so we'll continue to do some of those small projects. Uh, we're getting into, we're going phase three A, which is a, a new roof and, uh, and windows at, at BJM. And we've started planning what phase three B is going to be as well. Any questions? I'm going to go quickly through this to kind of remind us about what we've gotten done. Um, but just to point out this blue that, you know, these COVID times, right? So as a school district, you've been dealing with that on this daily basis, I know. But, uh, as a, as a, as a team that's trying to get things built and work with contractors and staffing, and how do you actually build things safely in COVID, um, and running up against, you know, procurement issues and supply chain issues and things like that? So Cindy and her team have really been trying to strategize around how do we, how do we maneuver through this new landscape, um, and get work done. So any, any questions or comments or, or anything you want to add before we dive in?
We like pictures.
Pictures, there's a lot.
Here we go, pictures, right? Uh, so one of the, one of the pieces that we got done early on was at Caroline Elementary School. There was an old septic system, super glamorous, right? Before?
After.
Huge change, right?
So you planted grass, so that's great.
Yes.
Oh, but along the way, along the way, you know, we dug some big holes in the ground and installed actually quite a bit of infrastructure to allow that, that septic system to function and really dug up that entire back part there. So the grading there for the soccer program that happens out there is, uh, should be a little improved as well.
Um, and Chris, Caroline got a hill, right? I mean, that was, you ended up with a hill.
Up here, it's just off the, off the, the screen. But yeah, that was one of these things where, you know, there was a huge amount of earth coming in and out of this as you build these septic system beds. And we discovered kind of through the process that, um, Kristen Herman was like, we should, you know, you got extra dirt, like, we'd love to have a sledding hill. So we were able to work with the contractor and have them not, you know, remove that soil and take it off-site, but instead pile it up so they got, they got a fun little hill that they can sled on. So that's, that's a win-win.
Right, working with the, working with that school and that community, what would, what would you like? And instead of trekking it away, which costs money, keep it on site, all the help? Go ahead, Chris.
The transportation building out on Boswick Road here. So, you know, Ithaca's gorgeous, but you don't want little, you know, ravines starting in your gravel parking lot that's on a hill, right? And so there were some safety concerns. Bus drivers come back late at night after, you know, teams coming back, you know, and walking in and out when it's dark out there as well. Um, you know, so the, the new paving that we see on the right here, um, provides a better surface for your fleet of buses, which is a pretty significant investment that you make, um, as part of your, your operations. Uh, so a lot of new paving, new stormwater infrastructure, again, really exciting things. But we did also include a conduit so that in the future, if electric buses are, are a thing that, that Ithaca starts to procure, you have some of that infrastructure at least started so you can run, run some wiring out there, just trying to, uh, take you ahead on that.
We also improved the heating in the base for the mechanics.
Yes, yes, that was an important staffing, you know, the, the environment for staff is one of the things that, that, uh, you know, we've heard a lot about from the district. Uh, we did a little bit of flooring at Boynton Elementary School and, and a new roof at South Hill. So, you know, Perry likes to come up here and walk there, I think. It's a gorgeous view when you get up on the roofs of some of, some of your facilities. Um, but new roof, uh, was done, you know, on schedule with.
Ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule.
About a month early.
Um, so some of the, some of this.
That was pre-COVID.
Yeah.
We'll just confirm that.
So there, you know, I'm going through some of the, the more nuts and bolts, facility kind of related stuff that you just have to, you have to do over a period of time. Uh, and you balance that, you know, we want to balance that with, uh, with new educational spaces. And one of those that you may have seen if you're driving around on, on Route thirteen is the, uh, the stadium. Uh, we completed what we call a re-carpet, which is taking the synthetic turf and just replacing it because it ages out over time, it starts to wear out and tear and rip and, um, and in some cases become unsafe. Uh, so that was due for replacement, as well the track. Um, the new, the new, um, asphalt and, and base for that track was redone to allow that to, um, to serve for, for a long time in the future. We also are working, um, so here's a photo of the track. If you haven't been out there, um, you can see that we've got new, new striping and new surfacing, uh, as well, the track as well, new bleachers, and a new press box that has that cool Ithaca wrap that you could see from Route thirteen, thanks to, uh, the athletic. The varsity baseball field, uh, most of the outfield was regraded to just to allow it to drain better. Um, you can see the lake here, uh, and the, you know, we're like a, what, two feet above the lake? You know, so we drain it as much as we can, but when the lake is high, the lake is high. But the, um, we're, we're trying to get the kids on to the field, uh, you know, in March when it's really wet and sloppy out there, but still allow them to, to use that field to play games. There were a number of security improvements at a lot of the elementary schools that, that were completed in phase one as well. Uh, so Bell Sherman and the, and the Wilson Annex as well, got, uh, we're talking about doors with electronic hardware that you can program and with the buzzers. So you can allow your community in, you can vet them, and then you can allow them access to this school. So just to be, uh, be able to track who's in your building, right? Paul Creek, uh, we replaced some of the glazing for security, uh, improvements. Heights and Field Northeast, um, so those, those came in. And so what that looks like in a lot of cases is, uh, some of this hardware that you see as you approach the building and how you interact with folks, uh, that at, at BJM, there's a new desk and an enlarged vestibule since they get a lot of community members coming in and out. So a little bit more space for them to wait, uh, for, for, uh, uh, wait for students, parents coming in to wait, uh, for meetings and that sort of. Ithaca High School included a number of improvements. So one of the first things that we looked at was that historically, the entrance to the, to the complex was, was down over here back in the sixties. Uh, over time, some things have shifted, and so we all know the entrance now to be, you have a large parking lot up here. So, uh, to prevent folks from visitors, uh, from having to walk really through, sometimes, you know, classes are changing and the students are walking everywhere. And, you know, I could be a visitor that, that the school doesn't really know is on the campus, right? So, um, to get down to the, the old spot where the, the, uh, the main office was. So we moved those functions up to the front, you know, in a kind of a more logical location for visitors to come and be welcomed into a, a welcome center. See the whole pictures of that in a moment. Um, and then Area J, we renovated to include, uh, nursing and all the guidance, um, functions there sort of as a wellness suite. Uh, and then across the hall, uh, a flexible space that is sort of a STEM light, STEM-ready kind of space, but really just flexible, and the school has been using, um, during COVID as a, as a search space, a swimming space, and just being able to use it flexibly if they need. Uh, there's the pool, uh, re-tiling, and we're getting water back in the pool. There is, uh, oh, so we also secured the courtyard.
You closed it off.
We closed it off. There are doors there now. Um, again, with the electronic hardware and its times, or during the class changes, it locks and then unlocks, uh, to prevent, I mean, I heard, uh, I think an Ithaca voice reporter just like wandered in and was like interviewing kids, having lunch right here. So, you know, let's, let's improve, um, the, the control that we have on, between the community and the, and the students a little bit more. Um, then in Area K, in your hall, uh, we're finishing up the renovation of that, and I'm really excited to start having these types of meetings in that space. Um, uh.
Another, another month?
I would defer to the construction manager.
Um, actually, we're hoping to be able to finish the high-performance coating over February, right? And that's really the last large piece of, um, work in there that would need to be completed before turnover. We also have some stair treads, but they're concrete filled, they're the existing stairs. So that's something we could do even after you guys take occupation of it on a weekend or a night.
So getting, getting closer.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, we have the LED, uh, display board training scheduled for the seventeenth.
And, uh, Chris, yeah, well, you, uh, you mentioned there's water dribbling into the pool. Is that, uh, is there actually water going in the pool?
There, there is.
It will flow slowly, it has to flow slowly.
They started last Thursday, Rob. Um, and today we found some, uh, dappiness that we are concerned with coming through one of the new pipes, uh, well, the existing pipe, but where we did some work. So, um.
It's a pool.
It is a pool.
It's a pool, there's water.
No, I'm sorry, damp, I was, I got lost in dampness, so.
Yes, so.
We'll talk about it, okay?
It's an inch an hour, so you do the math, and it takes like a. So the Welcome Center, you may have seen here, so, um, you know, that, as an opportunity, so visitors come to Ithaca High School, and the registrar function also is here for the district. So in some ways, this is kind of the front door of the school district, um, to welcoming folks in so that. Well, I don't know. All right, hang on. Um, so if you remember activities, right, up, up here, was it many of us? Philable Club member, uh, meetings in that space. So that got all gutted out and replaced with, uh, uh, the front desk, I mean, office functions, as well as a lot of meeting functions. So as a parent caregiver, you're coming in to have a meeting with principal, with teachers, maybe it's a CSE meeting. You don't have to go, you know, through the campuses, the, the bowels of Ithaca High School to, to have that. So pushing a lot of that up front. Um, you know, it's just, the, the, the thought of that was to try to have an open environment so that you could see through and feel like you're, you're welcomed into the, um, into the school district as its front door. into the school district as its front door. Um, so here again, we can see the old CJ crossover here where you can walk in and out. Uh, new doors, this is on the first day of school and folks coming in, you know, through those doors to be able to, um, you know, e- enter into the school, uh, with a little more, uh, a little more safety. This is the, the new space with some movable partitions, writable partitions, um, in Area J as well as the nursing suite over here on the right that's been renovated. So, uh, we're excited about the, the health, health team who has been working incredibly over these last couple of years. In Area K, this is, these are some computer renderings that we've made of the spaces. Um, we will see real photos and we will be in there very soon and, and see the two spaces that were created from that one space. So down below, kept the, the concrete more lecture format with a large screen in the front. Um, and then in, in what used to be the back, we infilled the floor, made a completely different space that can accept study hall, some of those functions that were up in activities that used to happen there, the really flexible space that we heard that, that sort of eighty-person group of staff or administrators and stuff that, that, um, the district was really looking for a size of space that would accommodate that.
What's the seating capacity in the, uh, the lower space, the venture?
I think we're eighty, ninety-person range, something like that.
Ceiling's really cool. I mean, just, the screen is awesome.
I spent a lot of time there back in the day, so I want to see what it'll look like there.
Yeah, it, it'll, it looks a bit different now. Um, and we're excited to, to have, you know, the AV audiovisual functions that, you know, you can have two things going on in the two different spaces, separate, or you can tie them together. So if you have a larger event and you want to say, okay, I want the sound and I want the video to appear on the screens up here, you can do that so you can have overflow. Like have people still kind of experiencing the space. There's a, a large glass wall in between that is switchable that you can make translucent or you can make clear, again, to allow those two spaces to function in different ways.
We look forward to the grand opening.
Okay, Ithaca High School roof, I mentioned that earlier. Uh, this, this dark colored roof is the new rubber membrane. Uh, the white colored roof is some of the older roof there. Um, so just going through and, and replacing the yellow, that's what happened this past summer. And this, this red is what's, what we're, uh, scheduling for this coming summer. So it's a lot of work there to, to, you know, fix the leaks. Um, add more insulation than what was there, so you have a more efficient facility as well.
Chris, before you.
Um, sorry, I have a question just while we're still talking about Ithaca High School. Um, so, uh, at the beginning of the year and then again, um, in the last few weeks, we've had, um, quite a lot of, um, fire alarms going off in the high school. Um,
Yep.
and rumors have been about, uh, people speculating that it has something to do with pole construction or something like that, uh, which, you know, none of us really know about, so I guess I'll bring it.
I'm happy to, you know, to talk that, uh, so we had, um, dust in a lot of our smokeheads. And actually, over the weekend, uh, we had, um, jump, uh, company come to start cleaning a lot of our smokeheads. So that the, uh, the dust is actually what it's been setting off in the lawn. Uh, so we had technicians at the high school on Saturday. And then we had a technician at the high school on Monday, and I believe, um, all, almost all of our smokeheads have been cleaned at this point. We also had a communication error with one of our wires and, um, campus construction has been great with helping us fix that, that communication issue.
And I want to be really clear, when, when spaces are under construction, those are sealed off from other areas. So this is an age issue. This is an accumulation of dust in those smokeheads over years of the building being used, not due to the construction, because those, those spaces are closed off. So yes, we've heard those rumors too, and that's why campus, whenever they hear something or something happen, when they're in the building, campus construction is our first line of defense, even if it's not capital-related, because they're there. We have the right folks in the building that are able to sort of do an assessment of the situation. And then we turn it over to Dan, who oversees the everyday facilities part of things versus the future, which is what this team does, right?
We're, we're also working out a regular cleaning schedule now in all of our buildings, uh, as a new way to address all of those smokeheads.
That's great. Thank you.
And Chris, before you slide into phase two, uh, Dan and Amanda, um, Dan, Dan, you put a whole lot of new furniture in Ithaca High and really around the district and all the old furniture went somewhere and it's,
That's right.
and it's out in the parking lot.
They're shipping, that's correct. So the, um, uh, we, so work with the, um, three-foot distancing guidelines and the six-feet distancing guidelines for lunch. Uh, we had the, um, we ordered lots of, uh, new desks, the triangle desks that are in the high school, uh, almost three thousand of them. Um, they kept getting delayed before the start of the school year because of supply chain issues and, and it was very late when we finally got them. Um, so we had to, uh, we had to move out a lot of existing furniture and we, we weren't able, uh, to take the time to, to, uh, work with, um, finding out how to, how to get them for scrap metal, how to, how to dispose of some of our older desks. Um, we also had a, a little bit of, of a time, uh, gap to get our, our desks in. Um, and then also in the fall, you had some staffing shortages with custodians, so we weren't able to pull that furniture out. Our, our custodial levels are better at this time. Um, but now it's, now, now it's pretty hard for us to open up the containers to, uh, empty them out. So our plan is when it gets warmer, we will, um, do a work with, um, scrap metal companies and we'll work to find out what furniture needs to be disposed of and what needs to stay. But at this time, it's just, it's too cold for us to, to have our, our custodians out there to, um, empty those containers. But our plan is to get rid of all the containers.
At the building, not the sun.
Yes, yes, that's right, that's right.
This is the business in the current, that all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're sorry for the delay of, of the containers.
Yeah. Everybody. Um, I, uh, sorry, I'm not clear on why we got rid of the old furniture in the first place?
Um, because a lot of the furniture, so a lot of the large tables, uh, we weren't able to have students at, uh, three feet uh, distancing in classrooms, um, especially if we had, so at the high school, for example, we have some of our smallest classroom sizes in the district. But with the, the three feet, with the triangular desks that we bought, we're able to put, uh, students at three feet and also do, um, you know, really great instructional groupings as well. Um, because you remember in the beginning of COVID, we had to use our old desks and we had to do rows. But now one of the benefits is that we can, uh, teachers and students can work in small groups.
Right.
And have the distancing and also have a, a larger amount of students in, in the, uh, in the classrooms. Some of the old science tables, you, you can't, you can't fit as many students in a classroom space. So that's why some of the older furniture is out there, but it, it, it's not just, um, the larger desks, it's some of the older teacher desks that were used from the, maybe from the eighties or some, some of the first, some of the very large furniture, we moved out. And we just have to figure out what's going to stay and what's going to go. And actually, last summer, we did pull a lot of the furniture in the high school. In the Q gym, we did have teachers start to look at, uh, what, you know, that they, yeah, what they wanted to keep and what they, uh, wanted to let go, but we're gonna have to do that again. Yeah, we also don't want to really get rid of all, uh, uh, some of the furniture without checking with some of our teachers as well.
A bit of personal, I mean, they buy their own money.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool. Uh, if, if we ever are finished with COVID, we don't need to be distancing three feet anymore, I would hope that we could keep some of the stuff at LACS. We're kind of sentimental about our tables in a weird way.
This, no, this is exactly why we want people to look at the furniture before we get rid of it. And that, that's also why some of our furniture is in our containers, because we want people to look at it first before we just give it away. Because if we rush, then of course, for sentimental, yeah, sentimental reasons, people would be frustrated.
And then I mentioned the scrap metal, the back on the bleachers, you might remember, we demolished those bleachers. That was a lot of metal material that was recycled, uh, that brought to the facility and, and actually the district got some money for that metal.
That was all in campus construction that made that happen. That was really, and, um, yeah.
That went to the boosters, I believe, that was sports booster, so, okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, okay, so I mentioned earlier Boynton and the Waya Middle Schools are getting a controls upgrade. Uh, and what that means is, you know, that the equipment in each room is controlled by a central system that tells it, you know, that here's the temperature, turn on heat, turn off heat, when you do it, you know, start before school starts so that the space warms up when humans arrive, that sort of thing. And that was, that was controlled, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of steampunk. It was controlled by all this pneumatic, you know, air flowing through these little teeny tiny pipes and that's, that springs leaks over time, just trying to chase that stuff down. So now there's a, there will be a modern, uh, computerized central system that controls that. So we hope to avoid some of the, some of the issues with rooms just overheating and teachers having to literally open the windows to keep themselves comfortable.
Chris, our students are now experts on H2O, so they could have explained that to you.
Qu- questions, we'll bring, bring questions if you want, and I'll, let's see what, see what we can do. Um, so we're excited at, uh, and energy improvements that we'll see at those buildings will, we're excited, excited to see, uh, the, the improvements and the savings of not only money, but, but possible, uh, that result from that.
Cindy, yeah, Rob and, and Gord, to let you know, we're about three weeks from finishing the valve replacements at both schools. We still have some pumps to do this summer when we have to shut the system fully down and we have the penthouse structural work to still do, but we've made great progress and fast work of getting rid of those pneumatic controls to hopefully improve the conditions in the two buildings.
And you're already seeing improvements.
Yes, yes, um.
With direct controls over
Yes.
various air movements.
Also, up in, up in the penthouses where a lot of these big mechanical units, um, are, are situated, we're adding ultraviolet light, uh, so that the air streaming passing through gets exposed to that UV light to, to help, uh, kill whatever
Sure.
microbes and stuff that are.
Chris, I was trying to ask, who's been the last slide, um, but since it was just mentioned, if we go back to the level of depth, this is for our community to know about the conversations that we have, in particular about how to save and use less fossil fuel. We spent a significant amount of time talking about what color the roofing should be as well, to see which one would actually use less fossil fuel and be better for the district. And so ironically, folks may not know this, but we purposely selected black because it would actually save us money and be, it would cost less electricity and less fossil fuel for us to use that. Do I, I capture that correctly?
Yeah, the climate that we live in, in upstate New York, um, is what we call a heating-dominated climate. So we spend a lot more energy and, and resources heating our buildings than we do cooling them, right? So if we lived in Florida, we would like that white roof because it's bouncing that solar radiation off and, and helping to keep the building cool. But up here in the north, we, we like to absorb heat. Um, and while that, you might think, okay, in the summer, that makes your building, uh, hotter, that, there, there's a balance there. Um, and we've, like I said before, we're adding insulation, so that effect, um, is, is lessened. One of the things, if you walk around on these roofs, you'll see that the, the white roofs actually, um, they, they get slippery more. And the, the black roofs actually get hot enough and they burn off some of the, that just natural debris and dirt and stuff that comes up on roofs. So there's a kind of a safety issue that, that we like about the terms as well.
Um, I have a question. Um, I'm not sure if you, like, covered this already, but I was wondering about, like, the water cooler that I, I checked. Because it's been, I think, like, five or six years since we, yeah, we've had, like, we've used them and fountains and the like. Because I was wondering if we'll ever switch back to thermal water fountains.
Um, at, at this time, we're, we're just be focused on the bottle fillers and the, the bubblers right now. We won't be turning on the, um, the water fountains.
And Grayson, thinking that, you guys were totally in elementary school when all this happened, right? So we have two buildings that run off of well water, right, Caroline and Enfield. And that's where we recognized that there was an issue in those, not in the water source, but actually the pipes. So in every single elementary school, and under Paul's direction, um, every single elementary school, all the piping that were mediated already. So that was actually a district project, not a capital project. So from, essentially from the wall all the way out to the fixture where the water would come from, right? That was all replaced with brand-new piping because we found that solder was really the issue when you hit that. And so on the middle schools, we've done a lot of the mitigation already, and then the high school, the last one, we made the choice in the district to just turn the water off across the board because it was really difficult to kind of communicate that it was just a, a one-building issue or a one-area issue because of the panic that was happening at the time in the world, um, red in the water, right? And so we have slowly been removing the water units, but some buildings are still keeping some because we have found that kids are hydrating more, they're filling their water bottles here. And when we have changed our faucets, we've replaced them with both the faucet and the bottle filler, so that now we have those units. And we actually, again, shot point from community feedback and sustainability measures, we heard community members that they didn't want them chilled because that was bad for the environment. And so we actually just use water, just water at that temperature. So there was a whole decision-making process around that as well. So, but yes, the high school until, like, until we get through COVID as well with fountains,
That's right.
we just paused because right now it's probably the safest measure for us, and so we can move forward with fountains and, and bottle fillers. Yeah. That help? Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So the next phase that we are, that we're gonna run through quickly is what we're calling Phase Two. We just got approval, so we're gonna be bidding that and starting construction just as soon as we can. And Cindy, I'll give you a minute to talk about uh, the issues that, that the construction team is, is trying to deal with.
So as, as we all are dealing with, um, in whatever life path we have, um, with trying to get materials, um, things are delayed, uh, even your Amazon order, right, you can't get. Um, so construction is no different. Um, we have a long list of materials that our estimating department has been tracking across, um, all of our projects and identifying several items that would be incorporated in Phase Two's work, um, that are long lead. With doors are sixteen weeks, four months. Um, uh, the frames for them are ten to twelve weeks. Um, some storm structures that we need for South Hill are four months. Um, so as Chris said, we just got approval today. We will do our due diligence and get on the street as fast as we can and move through the, uh, submittal and contract phase, um, in an effort to get some of these longer lead items ordered and get them as soon as possible. But understand, please, uh, we're gonna be dealing with it just like we did with Phase One and there may be some modifications to start and finish dates in certain areas and/or buildings, um, covered under Phase Two.
Yeah, thanks, Cindy. So the, these little red, uh, indications of when this is gonna happen is a little bit under flux. We were, weren't sure when we were gonna get approval, uh, as Cindy said. So now that we can bid and we accept bids, maybe mid-March sometime, you have to get contractors under contract and set things up and get submittals. And so the lead times that Cindy was just talking about are not gonna start until like April, maybe, or May, right? And so then start counting weeks and months from there. And then you think about a summer timeframe and those are the, the challenges that they've alerted us to as a team that we're trying to figure out how to, how to address, how to keep moving forward and getting work done, uh, in the, in this situation. So part of that's working with building leadership and flexibility around that and then Amanda's reaching out to folks and.
So that is the agenda item for Facilities Committee next week. It's the scheduling challenges that we're gonna be facing due to the delays that we've experienced with state ed as well as the delays in the marketplace with supply chain. Um, and so that is pretty much the entire agenda because it will take us that long to go project by project. That does not say, though, that we shouldn't. You're so excited to get to the LACS work. I know you've been patient to hear at IHS, but Phase Two is the LACS work, which is, we, um, it is in Phase Two because we know the decision-making process at, process at LACS is about including young people and we want to make sure it's students and voices in the community and we want to make sure that we did it right. And so there was an intentionality in the, in putting that in Phase Two because we wanted to capture those voices. And so if you participated in that, when we get to that second, um, it's, it's a great model for IHS as well that we could talk about in future, um, phases. So, thanks, Chris, sorry.
Um, all right, so, so start here at Ithaca High School. Basically, the, the scope of work is G and H, gender-inclusive restrooms.
First and second floor.
First floor, second floor, yes.
Will the, like, regular bathrooms be updated?
Yeah, so, so those, so. Yeah, so, so those, those bathrooms that are in G and H on both floors are going to get gutted, refurbished, uh, to be gender inclusive. So you would go in, you would have access to the sinks. Each stall will have a door on it, a privacy at the stall level.
And the way we have it scheduled, G would go and then H will go. So they won't all be down at the same time. Adam, they'll, they'll be staggered, okay?
Right. So after the bathroom renovation, would there not be any more like the old bathrooms?
Not in these locations.
Oh, but in other.
Yeah, so the, the bathrooms in Area K, for example, that were renovated fairly recently, those will remain, um, gender based. Uh, some of the other bathrooms, so, so I'll point out in Phase One, the bathroom that we added in, in Area J, there are a couple bathrooms. One includes a shower, is a single use bathroom. There's another one that's directly accessible from the hallway that's a single use bathroom. So we're trying to add those in as well, and those are very flexible. Pointing at the way middle schools are planning to receive a significant renovation to their theatrical spaces. So if you've been, if you've, you know, been on that shag carpeting, like that's, that's nineteen seventies vintage. That's the real stuff right there. And it serves its useful life and we're going to be, uh, removing that. But more importantly, sorry, more importantly, the, uh, you know, with those slotted walls, it's open to the corridors, there are obvious acoustic issues, um, there with the performances as well as, uh, including, uh, improving the lighting, uh, and the theatrical just capability of the space. Um, we're also going to be doing some renitrating renovations. If you've been in those schools, you get through the front door and you can go right, you can go left and, you know, nobody knows you're there. So just improving that and being able to welcome the community in, check in with a, with a human who's right there, um, and then be directed to where you can go. There will be also some bathroom renovations, uh, in the center part of that as well. Those will remain gendered. There are a couple other bits to allow the, the building to be partitioned off in different ways as we have after-school events, uh, just to control the flow of people to be able, you know, if there's a, an event in the gymnasium, you can close doors and prevent people from getting up into the classroom. So there's a basic just building management improvements around that. Um, so we did a few computer renderings about these spaces, these theatrical spaces. So they will now have walls around them. Um, we plan to have a, uh, pipe grid throughout the space so you can hang theatrical lights wherever you want. Uh, the idea being that, that you can get creative with the use of the space, yes.
Um, so you said the bathrooms at, at, at point are going to remain gendered. Are there going to be any gender neutral bathrooms added or created or, or?
Yes, there is.
Are there currently? I'm not sure.
There's, there is, will be one, it's hard to see on the, on this plan. There will be one that will be a single use bathroom that will be flexible, absolutely. Um, so the, the theaters, yeah, that's a kind of a dark image, but just to give you an idea of the different uses of, of those spaces. So we're very excited about what, what the theatrical, uh, programs will be able to do with those spaces. Um, LACS, here we go. So I'll start with the, with the site work. Um, so there's some accessibility improvements to, you know, from this upper parking lot to be able to get down to the, the amphitheater as well as being able to get to the exit on the lower level as for safety as well. Um, there's an addition of a basketball court down there. So you guys, now, see, you see shaking heads. So this is, this is what we've, we've, um, talked about with the building leadership and the, and the community as well as the, uh, as well as board members and, and, uh, seeing what, what sort of opportunities we can, we can bring to the, to the site. Adding a lot of lighting as well for safety. At the front of the building, there will be, uh, an addition that will expand that front entrance. Uh, there will be a few improvements to the, um, to the bathrooms as well. These two main bathrooms on the upper level, uh, will become gender inclusive bathrooms as well. There are still two of them, but we're, we're trying to renovate those spaces and create flexibility, yes.
Um, I'm sorry. Okay. Are there going to be like actual renovations or just converting them into gender?
Yes, there will be renovations, yes.
Amazing, thank you.
It will be renovations.
This is the upper second, this is the upper, right, the main level.
Yeah.
Bottom level we'll get to in the future phase, but we're getting main level renovation.
Yeah, we already turned one of them into a gender.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Some nice actual concrete stuff.
We should also add in those conversations that we're having about bathrooms and what should be renovated and what way, to be very cognizant of being ADA compliant as well. And so for some of our bathrooms, even though we had some ideas about to do, we couldn't put three stalls in them, for example, because it would no longer be ADA compliant or support folks with, uh, accessibility concerns. And so there was a lot of conversations about which ones go, conversations with the community, building principals, et cetera. So I want folks to realize that we didn't just randomly select a bathroom and say, let's do this here. It was a far more in-depth and intensive conversation.
And there's also code requirements too, for the number of actual facilities you have to have, right? Based on the population in your building. So that also is a restriction for us often in our creativity, right? And our wanting to versus like we, we must, right? This will be out of code, I think.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Um, so it, you know, if you've been past LACS recently, you see, you know, the, the, you see some great infrastructure here, you know? If you like Renzo Piano's, uh, museum in Paris there, you, 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 you know, you're, you're celebrating ductwork and you're celebrating these things. But, um, in this case, we, we thought that we could probably improve the look by hiding some of that infrastructure at the front entrance to your building. Um, so in addition to, uh, cleaning some of that up and hiding that, um, adding a, uh, an addition to the front that will allow more space for, for students to, uh, to, to come and go, right? And, and do the things that you, that you do there, be able to wait. I know that that space in the, in the front, it's like, um, it's like, I don't want to call it a living room, but it's an area that gets a lot of use, I understand, and a lot of interaction happens. And when we were designing this, talking with the students, talking with the staff, there, you know, we started with the, the principal's office and the main office, everything sort of come together. And they said, no, we want to, we want to separate that because we want to walk around and have those chance interactions with students. And so that, that was great. I'm sort of trying to take that, that ethos and the, and the values that the school is really important to that community and put it into the built form. So we're excited about that. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're going to switch now, so right, so we're, that's going to move over, this office is going to move over and then someone will remember you.
We had a, we had a whole series of meetings, but this summary is, is three or four years ago.
I have to remember that, yeah.
We got a lot of exciting feedback and multi-family ones of lots of fun ideas.
Loaded on the block.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, absolutely. How are we going to be renovating that, like, staff bathroom? That's part of the current main office, that will be Deb's office? Because I've been hearing those issues with the ventilation.
There, is that over by the nurses' room?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's currently, it's the main.
It's, it's attached to the current main office.
Yeah.
So going out on the left side and then.
Yeah, yeah, we are renovating that bathroom as well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
That will remain a single use.
Yeah, turning it and making sure that it's not an entrance from the office, but more so from the hall.
I think it's, I think it's entrance from the hall, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, so we're excited about what, what the front door of LACS will, will be from. Uh, grass roof on this, uh, living roof, you know, to have a little, a little. As you enter that from above, you get a little hint of that, of that green, as well as the green wall, the living wall inside that we're excited about with the screen area. So that'll be, um, any other question about LACS? Uh, so Beltramin and, and Beltramin Wilson Annex. Um, a lot of this is about water management, rain, water's coming up through the ground and, and just managing that, um, there are a lot of puddles and a lot of things that happen that, that get in the way of, of students, uh, outside.
It's not a side hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, water seeps at some level, which is, yeah.
I hate to, I mean, I hate to pull us back to LACS, but one question that we just realized we did have was about the HVAC systems, um, which are still, you know, they're, they, they don't really work at all. Um, and they kind of just run and run and run and run and run and run. Um, and we were wondering if there was going to be any repair work done on that in this phase? Or if that was going to be coming in the future, if that was even planned at all?
That's not included in this phase right now. And so that's, I think, is a district ongoing maintenance, uh, task to just kind of keep addressing whatever's going on there. Um, okay, so these buildings, new paving, new, uh, safety surfaces at playgrounds, things like that, uh, managing the water, new basketball courts there, uh, striping and new, new roofs. At Caroline, um, renovating some bathrooms as well there, those two main bathrooms, uh, and adding one of those electronic signs so the community, uh, can see the same kind of messages that we see out here at, at the high school. Enfield, so at Enfield Elementary School, the boiler system, uh, there were, I think, eight or nine smaller, what we call modular boilers down there that were running off of fossil fuels. I believe it was originally fuel oil and then it was propane. Um, and so those are aging out and some of them were, were kind of slowly degrading. And we said, well, we could replace these in kind with similar, more modern, but still fossil fuel, uh, burning boiler system. Uh, or we could do a geothermal system. So that's a, basically a heat pump. So if you've been hearing a lot of the efforts in Ithaca and our community talking to county are promoting heat pumps, that's what this does. This is called a ground source heat pump. So it exchanges heat with the earth. Uh, so the electricity for this building will, will increase, but, um, the fossil fuels will go away. So we're, we're excited about this installation. Um, this will happen over a couple summers because there's, uh, there's a fair amount of utility work that needs to happen.
And it's the first geothermal heating system in the district, correct?
That is correct.
And the site's, uh, tested, the site has been tested, it will work. And I mean, Deb, you know, all that.
Yeah, so, so the, the holes will go up to 500 feet. That's a, uh, boundary beyond which you need a different kind of permit. Um, although I think Cornell is doing like a thousand or two thousand foot heat hole. Um, we're going to stick with that, a little bit more conventional system. Um, and yeah, there are USGS data that's out there that we use to, to do preliminary design. But a couple of these wells have already been drilled and we've gotten testing data from the actual site to confirm the design.
Right, sorry. Just so folks know, right, the testing has been done. This is a site that can support it and it really made economic sense to go ahead and do a geothermal. So we look forward to that.
You might see a drill rig out there, drilling holes for geothermal.
We're not going to get any oil, but it's.
Let's hope not, Rob.
Or, I don't know, revenue streams, I mean. Go ahead, Chris.
So the district has recently engaged, um, uh, started a, a program that is offered by Ncerda, right? For free to do energy analysis, benchmarking and analysis over time. And so this is just a screenshot of one of the backboards for Enfield Elementary School. Um, and you can see a lot of different data. So we're excited to see this over time and as we make this, this change in energy source for that building, um, what it, what that profile looks like and what the energy use looks like.
And the principal's already working with, thinking about case study work around this.
Yeah, I mean, what we do is a great STEM field and we're excited to, to share what we do with students. Uh, moving to South Hill, so there is, uh, there is a significant amount of, um, of traffic flow adjustment. So one of the, one of the reasons that, just like LACS, waited till the second phase to do those entrance improvements is because there was a bigger move that was being contemplated. So currently the main office is, uh, over on the east side of the building. Um, the parent drop office is over on the west side of the building, off of ninety sixteen. Uh, so we're going to flip that, add a small additional to the side so that the community entrance is at, at the same side of the building where the main entrance is. So it makes a lot of sense, um, and provide a secure entrance as we're doing that. The, the office spaces over here will turn into a classroom. There is also some significant, uh, change that will happen to the, the way cars come in and out on this, on this west side of the building. If you've driven past there, when, you know, drop off or pickup, you just, you don't want to be there because you're just basically on the road because of the, of the traffic condition. So, um, up at the top end, the high end of that, that corner of that site, we're going to be, uh, creating a drive so that we can really have more distance for cars, especially pickup time when parents come and they wait for their students to come out to be able to queue and stack up and get off the roadway, right? Um, so we're really just trying to maximize some of that. We're not sure that it's going to completely solve it, but we think it will really help a lot, um, to get cars off the road and reconfiguring some things so that, you know, there's a right turn only and you get out of there just to, to increase the safety. Because there are some dangerous things that, that happen with drivers who are getting frustrated of not being able to go through there. So that, that's a big important, um, piece that.
Chris, and like some of our schools, that those will be one-way, like there'll be a one-way entrance and a one-way exit?
Yeah, the idea that this will be entrance only, um, and you come in and there's a, there will still be that loop, uh, that we've kind of experienced right now. It'll come closer to the building. There's that sort of large asphalt area between the ballards and the building. We're going to get, get folks closer to that, uh, to that part of the building so they can loop around, there'll still be parking, and then they can come through and, um, have a choice of turning right and just getting out of there or turning left if that's the way you really need to go and you might sit there for a while, but to allow traffic flow to happen. Uh, so here's sort of a before looking at that, um, and, and here's a shot of a rendering of the, of the new entrance and porch area that, that we designed for that, that entrance way. Phase three, any questions on Phase Two?
Just, uh, we're, we're getting a little late, Chris.
All right.
Just touch a little bit on Phase Three A and we'll.
Enfield roof, re-roof, new roof, um, and some improvements to that, this volume here, just to, to dress it up. Uh, BJM, new windows and a new electronic sign.
We were out at Enfield last night and, yeah, that, uh, it still needs, that needs to be, um, upgraded a bit. So that was pretty up here. So, uh, there's a lot, we're still, uh, working on a lot, Chris, for Three A, you know, the design and talking about what to, what we can do. STEM, uh, the STEM wing at, at the guy school, that's going to be the next big thing. Uh, but, uh, any, uh, any questions? There is, a lot has been done, but there's a lot more to do and there's a lot going on. So, um, OACM meeting on Thursday, we'll look forward to that. And then Facilities Committee will be next Tuesday.
All right.
And we'll talk about, uh, timing and schedules and all that then.
Thank you for your time.
No, thanks, Chris. Thanks for your work. Um, and, and thank you, Cindy. And we do have to mention by many that, uh, the Chris, your designs, your, the work that you all have done from your teams has really been outstanding. Just, you said, from the community, from those of us who work with you all the time, it's been a, a great process so far, really continuing to get a lot worked on. It was very, very difficult, two, three and a half years now. Uh, but, you know, yeah, the pool's, pool's going to get done. York lecture hall is done. That is a game changer. That is, uh, really you don't, uh, you don't feel like you're, uh, it isn't that high anymore. Uh, but, uh, York's been there for a long time, but now it's going to be a much better space for the students and the staff. And, um, and community spaces, uh, around the, around the district are being improved, improved. And yes, that festival court at LACS, sure, that's for LACS, but it's also for the community up there. And so we, that was requested, uh, it'll be a good outdoor space, a flat space, uh, again, it'll be a lot. But Chris, Cindy, I thank you for, for your work and, uh, and it's been great. Um, and we look forward to the meetings coming.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm just, uh, we have a second reading adoption and.
Yeah, but quick, a quick approach, just let me follow up, Chris, on what Rob just said. Uh, I'm teaching, uh, a lecture on, for, uh, secondary or undergraduate students in education about the Eight Square Schoolhouse and sort of the idea of educational architecture. And so it's been great to be able to engage in conversations about teaching and learning spaces, then how those translate into literally concrete plans, right, of what we're doing. So, uh, just to reiterate what Rob said, it's been a great learning experience, but also some innovative maker spaces that we've been calling teaching and learning spaces. So, so thank you for that. And given where we find ourselves this evening, I make a proposal that we postpone Policy One Four Zero Zero, the March eighth meeting.
It's really just a short policy, but, uh, without objection, can we do that? Uh, we don't need a vote on it. Uh, well, actually, we do, all right, we do. All right, you're going to. I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
And did you, was that a true motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And a, indeed a second by Mora and just go ahead and uh, call the room.
Rob Inzley?
Yes.
Sean Ivisley Bradwell?
Yes.
Nicole LaFaye?
Yes.
Warren Laine?
Yes.
Ms. Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
Forget, uh, thanks everybody. Dr. Brown, any other discussion items? Amanda, you know, you're not going to talk about budget time or is it?
You know, I usually like to go at the nine o'clock hour, so if he minutes late and we can uh, we can just catch you the next time, how about that?
Excellent, so uh, so thank you all. We appreciate the opportunity to review all that, Chris, and uh, and I think we're.
Just because she's responded to my shape, are you having a meeting in two weeks?
Uh, I thought it's on the agenda, the twenty eighth.
During great.
The twenty seventh is during break.
Yeah, the next meeting is during.
We have not determined that, it's on the calendar, but thank you for, well, um, I had to go to work and when it was a snow day, I'm working, I don't know, uh, you know.
But in years prior, we have said that that probably was not the best because of uh, of, of, because it takes us in community involvement.
Yeah.
But it was a question of whether we, I'm, I'm not sure we can do without a whole meeting because we're in budget season. Don't we need to get some work done, Amanda, or?
So we typically, we typically will, I mean, we're going to have a huge finance committee agenda, right? So we'll have TST VOCs will be presenting, as will the transportation department, as will the facilities department. So uh, you know, that, that, that is, sorry, Chris, you knew, you knew it. I mean, we, we sort of designed it together, but um, it's going to, those are going to be really in depth and probably a, a little longer than traditionally we've got, um.
So.
It should be an expected.
Someone will.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a lot.
And I presume that we'll have an HR report that we need to, as well. So maybe it'd be a modified meeting, I suppose.
And we'll have preliminary, you know, at that time, just very preliminary estimates with budgets.
So we're going to have a voting meeting of some sort next week. The twenty seconds. In two.
Twenty seven. Oh, is there twelve?
Twenty second.
Twenty second. Oh, that's a vote, yes, right. That's, I forgot.
Are we clear on what we're doing?
Yes, we will, we will push this, the motion that was approved, is to push the policies to the March meeting.
That's what confused me.
Yeah. The reason why I did that was to make sure we could have another policy meeting prior to revisiting that policy as a full board.
Thank you, that's what, that's what confused me.
So what about our second regular board meeting?
Yep, I'm going to have some, you're right, we're in budget season.
Yeah.
On the twenty second. Yes.
So we're going to.
Yes, thank you.
I, I.
I'd also ask you for that.
Yeah, no, we, uh, appreciate it. So uh, all right, so we're, we're going to maintain our schedule. Okay, all right. Well, no, you know, is that sort of figured out? All right, we're, we're adjourned, thanks everybody.